For your favorite dish, share it with your neighbors. You know, this is the best time to kind of kick back and have some fun. Let kids meet other kids in the neighborhood. I mean, we've got a park back there and bounce house and I'll see what else we can do. And, you know, I'm gonna ask the little ones, fire department, they can bring a fire truck out for a couple hours. And let the kids play on the fire truck and maybe one of the policemen. Yes, ma'am?
Where is it going to be?
Right here.
Oh, it's here.
Yes. It's always a town hall. Yes.
Yeah, for the people that are relatively new, we used to do this every year. There was a town picnic, it was behind City Hall. And you'd bring your lawn chairs and it was every year. Probably was, it was like in July and August. And it became brutal after certain, it was like, forget this. Because there's no water back there, you know, it's not a, you know. But we used to have, every year, there was a picnic. Town Hall had the picnic, you brought your lawn, you brought your food, it was really...
Yeah, we used to like hire people to bring their cars, people would, you know, bring Domino's, older, you know, the older...
It was really laid back.
It was just really laid back and, you know, the kids would have fun and, you know, it was, it was fun.
It was fun.
So, you know, I'm excited to be lead of it. Yes, sir?
I'll do the other 200.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. There it is. Steve? So, bring your, bring your family, bring your kids. Um, it's gonna be a lot of fun. We got a lot more people. When I was on City Council years ago, we didn't have that many people out here. You know, we probably had less than 100 homes when I first came out here on City Council. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun and I'm excited. The lady gave us a great deal on the bounce house. She gave us, chose for a hundred dollars since it was a city event. So, it's gonna have a slide for the kids, a little step up. So, it's usually 200 some dollars, so I'm excited. And, um...
I know, speaking from the council, this is one of those things, we're real, we're real happy that the MDD took this on. Because, you know, what feels great about these boards and these other things is that it allows us to leverage more people. Because, you know, just more people, the better. A lot of stuff doesn't get done, not because it's a bad idea, you just don't have the manpower to get stuff done. And, um, so, speaking for myself and all the things we're working, it's fantastic that the MDD has stepped up. I really appreciate the MDD doing this. I mean, it's great.
I'm excited. I really am. Yes, ma'am?
So, I'm over here, what does MDD stand for?
Municipal Development.
District.
District.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. Because I had to workman all day. So, yeah, just, and if anybody wants to volunteer, you know, and help us set up, you know, they're more than welcome. I mean, I'm, I'll take volun, we'll take volunteers, it's the only way.
Do you need some folding tables or have you got those?
We have, Mark, you have a couple, right?
I got seven.
And I, I've, Mark has some.
He took as many?
We would take as many as you want. If you have some, we would love to have them. Any ideas besides what we're doing, we're open for it. You know, like I said, we did it every year for several years and so, um, we're excited, you know. We're gonna put lights on. So, does anybody have any questions, concerns?
There'll be a flyer out again.
Yeah, we're gonna send out a flyer. Um, we're gonna go door to door and put out the flyers. So, just check your front door and...
I think the one thing we talked about was the Sunday afterwards. Some of us offered volunteer to kind of clean up afterwards. If anybody wants to join us Sunday morning, you know, possibly eight, nine o'clock tonight, just to bring a couple of garbage bags.
Well, we got the trash cans out there.
Okay. Well, either way, the whole idea is that, like, Sunday at noon, you wouldn't know there was a party, right? That's the idea.
So, we're gonna try to clean up as much as we can the night before so everybody can go to church the next day and, you know, enjoy their family. But if you could just spend an hour cleaning up, that'd be great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Linda.
I'm here for sure. Bye bye.
We don't have water back here?
No, no, we used to...
Yes, sir.
We, we had a, um, no, we, one year we had, I forget what you call it. It had water. It was a water slide, you know, so, because it's hotter than blazes out there in August. So, we didn't have a water feature for little kids. You know what I'm saying? We have a bounce house now.
We don't have water back, why don't we just put a cat in it?
Oh, we do. No, we didn't, no, we got water. We don't have a water event.
It's just a misunderstanding.
I just said the wrong word. I meant that we don't have a little kiddie pool or we don't have a water feature.
Okay.
Investment policy.
No, we got a hose back here. We're good. All right, um, next up, uh, let's go back, I think I'm back on track here. Number four, okay, consideration of the investment policy. Okay, so, what this is, is that, um, when, when we have our city funds, so a couple of years ago, many years ago, when I first started investing the town's funds, the, what we did is we would lock in with the banks our interest rates. So, we locked in, um, so all our, all our accounts to bank, we have 13 bank accounts. We have 13 different bank accounts at Point Bank. So, what we did is we, we switched banks and we locked in an interest rate. And we locked it in because rates were going down. So, I don't know if you get it, your current bank now, but it's like point zero, zero something. It's very low. And we unlocked in about a 2% rate. We locked in a 2% rate when interest rates were near zero. Well, it reset. So, about two years ago, it reset. Right now, we're getting point 29. We're getting point 29% across all of our bank accounts. Well, there are investment pools now, that's run by the state of Texas, where you're getting about 1.3%. You're getting about 1% more. And everybody should be able to forecast which way you think interest rates are going. We all believe interest rates are going up. That's pretty much what's being telegraphed out there. So, when interest rates are going up, what you wanna do is you wanna invest in a pool. Is you wanna invest in a, in a money market account which marches up with the interest rates. The last thing you wanna do now is lock it in a bank. So, now, because interest rates are going up, we now wanna be able to invest our funds with the state of Texas, in the Texas investment pool and watch the interest rates go up. So, in the one month that we debated this, between last month and this month, we missed out on about $260 that our bank account would have generated just in the one month, if we would have been in that pool versus in our bank account. So, we need to revisit our investment policy. We need to be able to get into this Texas pool so we can invest our money over there. Okay? That's kind of the genesis of this. It's not just, hey, it's Tuesday and we're bored, let's, let's move our money around. It's because it's real money now. We have to get it out of our bank and move it into the pool. And so, the interest rate goes up, we capture that. Right now, our money at Point Bank is generating about 1.3, 1.4%. They're keeping it. They're paying us only point 29. So, that's why we need to move it to a pool. So, the first thing you have to do in the state of Texas, if you're gonna invest money, is you have to have an investment policy. It says what you can and can't do. Texas has an overarching law, it's called Public Funds Investment Act. Texas law says what you can invest in. Each city then goes in and takes that investment possibility and narrows it down. It says, this is what we're comfortable with. Even though, yes, according to Texas, we can invest in 28 things, we're gonna focus on these four. Because that's all we, that's we, what we're comfortable with. The city of Dallas might invest in all 28. They might do reverse repos and laddered repos and do all these kinds of things. That's great for this, for Dallas. It's not for Lakewood Village. Okay? We have an investment policy before. We never invested funds before, we kept them in the bank. We're revising the investment policy now. We need to revise it every so often. Because now, in order to go into the pool, we need to revise the investment policy. Okay? So, that's, that's what we're doing. Now, the way that these things, the way that it works for us, just to make everybody kind of rest easy here, you can't invest in the stock market. Texas doesn't allow that. You know, you can invest in US government bonds, you can invest in certain things. You cannot go into the stock market. So, no, we're not gonna buy Apple. I don't know whether the thousand dollar iPhone is a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know. But we're not investing in Apple stock. Okay? You can't do it in Texas. You cannot invest in equities. Can only be bonds and money market, okay? No stock market stuff. When you invest in Texas, there is an issue called certification. What that means is, if we go to invest money with someone, they have to get a copy of this investment policy. We have to give it to them. Then they have to give us back certification that says they read our investment policy and the investment we're making is legal. They have to certify back to us that what they're doing is legal and it meets our policy. That's called certification. So, I can't call Fidelity on the line and say, hey, I'd like to invest 200 grand in your European stock fund. Can't do that. Even, they'd say, give us a copy of your investment po, they know it's illegal. And then, they'd have to certify through their lawyers that it's a legal, and they look. So, that's the protection that Texas puts in. Is that the other guy has to legally commit that what you're doing is legal. So, it's not up to us whoever, so if Ed's the investment officer and Ed goes nuts and wants to go and buy something weird, he can't. The other guy has gotta certify back that it was legal. And if the other guy doesn't, when it's illegal, obviously, we have an action. We'd sue them as the city, because they know it was an illegal act. Okay? So, that's certification. So, basically, in Texas, they make it really hard for you to screw up, because it's not California. They learned from California and put all these restrictions in place for Texas. So, what we do here right now is we have 13 bank accounts at Point Bank. There's 13 of them. And what I do as the investment officer is I move money around between the 13. That's all I do. It goes from one Lakewood Village account to another one. And they all get the same interest rate. All the money's treated the same. It's just for control purposes, we move money around, they have different purposes. That's what the bank accounts are for. So, even if we go to the pool and invest our money there, all we're gonna do is move the money from there to the Lakewood Village account here. You, you can't move it into Ed's bank account. You can't move it into Dan's bank account. It can only go from one Lakewood Village account to another Lakewood Village account. There's no way to move money from an account to a non-Lakewood Village account. Can't be done. You new guys don't know about the fraud and the embezzlement that happened here for years and years and years. We had embezzlement. That's because she kept the bank account open. She kept one open that she told the council she had closed. And she funneled the money into that bank account. Because you can't move money into Lakewood Village bank account, into your account. You can't do that. It's gotta go in a Lakewood Village account. So, that's how the shifting of the bank accounts works, okay? So, all we're talking about is rearranging the money from Lakewood Village accounts to other Lakewood Village accounts.
This is the tax pool, I pulled it up online.
Yeah.
And it's paying 1.26%. But if you scroll them down, it says it's not government insured. You can lose your, your investment.
Sure.
To the whole thing.
That's true.
You can't lose it, it's fine.
Sure you can.
You can lose your principal.
Depends how much money you have there. I mean, so what, what...
I've never lost anything, but I'm just asking, Mark. It sounds, it sounds, when it sounds too good to be true, it kind of makes all people scared.
That's fine. No, that's good.
So, and that's why I read that it's not FDI, it's not insured. You may lose your value and there's no bank guarantee on this investment.
So, here's, here's how this works. That's a good question, okay?
Bad.
Any investment you make, anyone you make, if it is not a bank account, the bank account has FDIC insurance. The bank account does. Any other account you have, they'll tell you, look, it's not insured by the federal government. That's true. That's absolutely true. Now, if you buy a treasury bond, right now, a one-year treasury bond from the United States government, that's a risk-free asset. Everybody in finance and insurance, that's risk-free. The US government is as good as it gets. US treasuries are considered the risk-free asset. They're the, they're the least risk investment on our planet. So, that is what that is. Now, if you buy that treasury bond from the United States government and it's gonna expire in one year, it's not insured. Now, can you lose money? If the federal government goes away, you can lose money. Yes. If the world ends, then that's gonna go away. That's not insured. There's only one thing that's insured in the United States of America, that's a bank account. So, what Texas does is Texas runs this pool. Texas is the one that set it up. So, what they do is they only invest in things that are maturing very soon. So, if you have a one-year treasury bond and it is maturing in a month, in 30 days, that's what they owe. Because basically, you gotta get to 30 days. If the world doesn't end in 30 days, you get your principal and you get the interest for the 30 days. So, what these mutual funds invest in, what Texas requires them to do, is to hold investments that are very short lives. Repo agreements, those are overnight agreements. That's, I'm loaning you money for one day. One day. And then I'm, you're gonna give me back the money tomorrow. So, they invest in these very short-term financial things. They have very short maturities. So, that's what Tex Pool is. So, if you invest in a treasury bond, it's expiring next week, yeah. If you think the world is gonna end, then there is no investment for you at all. Then, you know, that, that's it, okay? But that's why Texas set this up, because they want cities to be able to invest, but they want it to be super safe. So, they restrict it to what you can invest in. Yeah, Joe?
You're not gonna invest at all. You're gonna leave some in the bank just, just in case.
We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna ladder, yeah, yeah.
Hold on. What did we say last month? That same question was answered, was asked. What was the answer that was given? Does anybody remember?
I don't remember. I don't know, I wasn't here.
Well, fortunately, somebody's videotaping it. Thank you, Johnny.
I asked a question. It was said that you were gonna keep the money in that account and move it out when you needed it.
The reserves, that's right. Yeah. Because our checking accounts...
So, to his question, you, you do plan on keeping all of it in that fund, if not?
Okay, so let me, let me clarify the accounts. We have 13 different accounts.
What are the names under, uh, under the city's name?
Yeah, the city itself has 13 bank accounts. So, every month, we get 13 envelopes that come in the mail and I reconcile 13 different bank accounts. And then Linda reconciles 13 different bank accounts. Yes. So, some of them are checking accounts. The checking accounts are with Point Bank. Okay? You don't, you don't write checks on a savings account. So, some of our accounts are checking, some of our accounts are reserve, savings. Some of the accounts are, are debt servicing, some of them are bond accounts. There's different kinds of accounts. So, this account at Tex Pool is an investment account. It is not a check-writing account. Our check writing is through Point Bank.
You stated last month that you can write checks out of the accounts and that's one of the benefits of this. So, now we're, hold on, let's be clear. So, now we're saying what we said last month is not gonna... You specifically said...
Of course, you can write checks.
You can write checks out of it. And this is one of the advantages of it. And now we've got people in the audience here telling you that you can't write checks out of it. We're not gonna do it.
I'm just telling you what, we don't even have a...
The story has changed 15 times in 30 days.
15 times?
The question, the question is, why are we moving our money from Point Bank? Forget we're... The question is, why are we moving our money?
The question that we have here, okay, so, there is Tex Pool. Tex Pool is set up by the state of Texas. It's where, I forget that, I'm gonna make this up. There's like 550 cities, 600 school boards, 900 special districts. Basically, it's virtually everybody in the state of Texas. Government entities that invest in Tex Pool that was set up by the state of Texas. In order to get into the pool, you know who approves your application? The state comptroller. It's like the treasurer of the state of Texas has, so it's, it's specifically for Texas cities. Okay? And that's what it's set up for. It's a big boy pool that you put your money in. Now, it's, it's that simple.
The question was, why are we moving our money from Point Bank? And you gave a very specific answer last time.
The reason why we're, we're looking to move our money now is because what is the rate we get at Point Bank?
Yeah, that is not what you said.
Well, tell them now.
Okay.
The reason we get at Point Bank is we get point 29%. Right now, as Paul pointed out, and I don't know which Tex Pool we looked at, it's about 1.3. It's about another one percentage point is, is what they're giving today. Now, which way are interest rates going?
If anybody in the council ever remember that the Federal Reserve is gonna be raising interest rates. So, what we want to be in is we wanna be investing our funds in something which is gonna float up. We wanna capture the increasing interest rates. When treasuries go up, we want to be able to increase and capture that extra yield. Okay? That's what we wanna do. So...
Yeah?
So, I mean, we, I think we all agree, you know, I thought in all of the class, council meeting, that this was a good idea to invest. I think the reservation is that, me personally, I don't want the entire amount invested. I want it to be, you know, some of it still left in a bank account. For security reasons, because there it is still, it could be very minute, but still a risk of losing money. When I'm reading the proposal, it doesn't really tell me how much you're gonna be investing of. I don't know, is it 50% of it, is it 60% of it? And so, that...
It's gonna change.
But I think the council should assess a number that it doesn't exceed and then the cities can find. It's a, it's a relatively new policy. There's 281 cities invested into that policy. There's 1,216 cities in Texas. So, there's not, there's not a huge percentage of cities that are involved in it.
There's a lot of special districts and there are a lot of cities that are involved.
Well, it says 281 on the side.
We have the guy, anyway. Okay, so here, I mean, here's, I totally get you, that's fine. But again, here's the issue that comes up, all right? We have about $180,000 bond payment. We're gonna get those monies in December or January, when we get our property taxes to come in. So, our accounts skyrocket up in December or January. February, we make the bond payment. So, the counts go up and they go down, they go up and they go down. It's not like you're sitting there saying, we've got $300,000 and then it's 301 and then it's 305 and then it's 290. It goes way up and then it goes way down. Okay? So, if, if you went through the investment training, which the state makes you take, they tell you that basically you need to try and come up with a reasonable minimal amount and then you need to adjust. You need to, because what are we gonna do when we get, $250,000 comes in in one month in the property taxes? Say, you can't invest that for one month? That one month alone, it's gonna generate like $1,500 in interest for the one month we put it in a fund till we make the bond payment. So, you know, let's start with the basics here. Do we wanna invest in Tex Pool or not? It's gonna cost us about 5,000 to 10,000 dollars a year if we don't do it. Because our cash reserves are going up, up, up. They're just gonna now start climbing rapidly. So, it's a question about opportunity. Do we wanna do it or not? I think it's a, it's a big boy thing. I think we need to do it. We need to capture that money. It's crazy to let the bank get 1.3% in a money market fund by a treasury that has the point 29. That's nuts.
Mark, I don't think anybody thinks that we shouldn't do it. I think it's against the security of knowing how much you're willing to invest.
Tell me, okay, let me ask that question back, yeah?
Yeah, I think I would like to see us put together a, a profile, a risk profile, and see what we would be comfortable investing based on the annual budget number of cash flow that we have. And then, and then model it, whether it's 50, 50, 50 in the bank, 50 in Tex Pool, whatever the number comes up to be. And then I'd like to propose that we model that for, I don't know, 12, 18 months and, and then see what the best option is.
What is what you wanna model?
Money in the bank versus money in Tex Pool.
The amount of return that we're...
Yeah, but, but I mean...
Less than the risk and the amount of reporting.
Yeah, because there's no risk profile here.
I mean, does everybody understand what a money market mutual fund does?
Yes.
Yes.
The, the price of a money market mutual fund is a dollar. It's a fixed dollar. They don't break the buck. It's a dollar. Okay? Prices don't go up and down. Prices don't change in money market mutual funds. Because if you own a bond that's expiring tomorrow, there is no price change. So, it's not like you own a stock and it's 57 and it goes down to 52 and it goes up to 63. It's a dollar. It's a dollar every single day. It's always a dollar. It's a money market mutual fund. It's a dollar. So, I'm not really sure what the risk profile...
But you're indicating though, Mark, that, that we only have, I guess we have our windfall in cash only in certain months. So, I, I, unless this is modeled, I don't know if it's worth the risk or not. You know, $5,000 to $10,000 of putting 100% of the town's cash at risk, you know?
Okay, well...
So, let's, let's have the discussion on the board.
Okay, so right now, the question is...
It's a long meeting, so let's, did you have...
The question is, why are we closing one of them? It's the state law. Hold on. The statement was made it last month. And we can pull a video that we need to get out of Point Bank. They don't want our money. They don't wanna deal with us and we need to close our accounts. I went back and watched the video three times and verified that that's what was being said. So, you know what I did? Like any normal person, I went to Point Bank and said, hey, I've been told, to quote, that the banks no longer want our money, as a general. Is this true? Everybody wanna take a guess what they said? Come on. You think, you think the banks came back and said, we don't want your money?
It's not the banks.
The banks, hold on.
The bank. You talked to one bank and one law office. I talked to him too. You know, it was funny.
I talked to the president of Point Bank. So, all of our businesses did the same. We have some money in our cash, yeah, yeah.
All right. Here's the question, here's the point of order right now. What we're looking at is the investment policy. Okay? We're talking about the investment policy. Not how much money to invest where or whatever. This is the policy. The policy's open.
It determines the amount of money being invested.
So, let's take a look at the policy and let's go through, Dan made some edits to the policy. So, Dan made some, some suggested edits to the policy. Okay. So, let's, let's kinda go through them, because I think most of them are good. I think most of them make sense. More elaboration out of the Public Funds Investment Act. So, what happens is the Public Fund Investment Act lays out basically what you need to do. So, they tell you that you have to have an investment policy, you have to worry about liquidity, safety. Liquidity, safety, and... Anyway, um, so, basically what this is, is, you know, what's the, it's boilerplate. Everybody has the same one. You, you cannot, basically, it's, it's safety, liquidity, and then yield. So, they don't want you chasing, you know, strips like they did in California, which is what bankrupted them. Right, so, receipt of a market, made a term second requirement for safety in principle. Okay. All right, so Dan made a suggestion here, um, basically with the code section, that's fine. Read copy, presented, so that's, so the second change Dan made there relates to the certification. So, that is the certification requirement that anybody that we invest with has to get a copy of the investment policy and then you have to certify back to the city that that is a, that it's legal. So, that's fine. Third one down, I, we need to section on controls.
That's an important one, as well, there's multiple brackets and it's all, but we need to section on controls here. That's what Elizabeth was just mentioning, is that there's no controls here. The chief investment officer gives 100% discretion over where, when, why, how, now, much. Which again, is the problem that we have today, is that one person can move money around is that one person can move money around, and there's no controls over that. So, if you, if you've got a town and you've got a certain amount of money, you know how much you're gonna be spending, you can set this stuff up, but to have an investment policy that gives one-hundred percent discretion to a single individual is not good, that's why most of the towns have a section on controls. So, that bracket means we need to revisit this and think about how we can put some controls.
Okay, we'll talk about controls. So, what we're talking about doing again, we're talking about moving...
May I ask you a question real quick? So, Dan, you said, let me turn the lights up, you said concern about one person moving money around, so, moving money around, from where, from, what's the from and to?
So, you don't understand the from and tos?
No, I do.
You don't answer the rhetorical question?
No, so, I, I guess I...
I just, I wanna make sure, do you not understand it? Because if we don't, then, I mean, that's a simple question, right? So, if we don't understand it, we probably should take a closer look at this.
Answer your question. No, no, I'm curious.
Why would I answer the question that's obviously, everybody knows the answer, if you answer it...
I don't know the answer, so, Clint.
Well, you don't know the answer, guys, we need to take a better look at this.
Answer the question.
Let me, let me, so, I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't need to be leading, but the from and to is from either this checking account to the savings account, or the savings account to the checking account. Is there a concern that the money can be moved outside of a Lakewood Village account?
So, guys, let me ask you a question, we just did a budget with no bank statements, we just did a budget with no invoices, we just approved a budget with no numbers for August, for July.
We weren't approving those numbers for July and August, we were approving the budget, Dan.
So, understand that the information is not flowing. We guys were fighting, hold on.
No, we're just...
You're probably controlling a lot of the...
And look, when you talk about the controls...
He asked a very valid question.
Yeah, it's going from one Lakewood Village account to two...
And what you're concerned about is, guys, I went to, I went to the bank. You know why people are getting nervous over here? Because I went to the bank, okay?
Right, so, let's talk about control, Mark.
So, my whole deal on the control deal is, I think, and to me, what I'm understanding on that, is I think the control should be in the five council members, and then the sign-off is by the mayor. I think, as, as an individual, my, my part is, is I want five people making my decision, not one. So, I, I feel that the five, five council members should agree upon that amount and all that stuff, and then the mayor should sign off on it.
Well, no, I, I, okay, I, I understand that, but just for clarity, when the money's being moved around, it's, in that case, it's not the mayor, it's the, it's the control officer, it just...
Which is the mayor, we let the mayor become the CFO.
Well, because of all, of the six people, he's the only one with a PhD in accounting, he's most qualified.
What does that have to do with...
With the rights and checks.
But, but, we're still, we're still letting one person determine all our investments. So, so mine is, as a resident, I want five people to make the decision, not one.
And that, okay, so, right, I mean...
I feel more comfortable with five people than with a...
I don't have a problem with that, but here's, here's, we get into a problem of, so, for example, okay? We need to pay a bill, we need to pay a little fire and EMS, the check is due, we pay it every quarter, okay? We need to move money, we can't, I can't ask the final event to approve that transfer, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
But you know what it's due here?
Yeah, so, yeah, if that money's moved, so, my part is, and that's where the percentage of what goes into the investment accounts versus the revenue, just like our businesses, and, and, no, I don't have a PhD in all that stuff, but I have over a hundred employees and all that stuff, so, I understand the finance, but what I'm saying is, the, so, the normals, the normal day operations, you pay the bills and all that stuff, I don't think that's under the, the question here. The question is, on this investment part and all that stuff, on the investment policy, I think the city, or, I'm just saying, as a, as a resident, I'm saying that I feel more secure that five people are agreeing on something, and then you're signing off on it. I, I think putting that in the policy and saying that that's behind that is what, what I'm hearing from what Dan is saying.
I think that, look...
Not within the town, it's going in, the town is...
Here's, here's the healthy discussion we're having, okay? This is a good discussion. In the past, in this town, we never had an investment, this town's never had an investment in its life. We always had bank accounts, we had bank accounts, we never had any money till 2007, we started climbing, so we always, never had to worry about investment, it was in the bank account. Well, now, we're maturing, we're getting, we're starting to get like a real city, we've got money now, we've got some debt, now we have some real investment. So, Brent, your question...